Ah, perfect. Call to order, the March 7, 2023 meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance and members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www... three W's dot northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in any public hearings but not attend the hearing in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the hearing or anything for this meeting to geneenright@j e n r i g h t@northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Just end for everyone's information, this hybrid version of open meetings are allowed under current state law through the end of this month unless state law changes. That will lapse at the end of this month and we will go back to pre-COVID regulations for open meetings, meaning generally everyone needs to be here with some limited exceptions for remote participation. Okay, can we take a roll?
Kelly Cormier. We'll go back to Kelly. Alyssa Koenig?
Here.
Sean Kevlin?
Here.
Eitan Goldberg?
I'm here.
John Simons?
Here.
Peter Boynton?
Here.
Kelly Cormier?
Here.
Okay.
Attending remotely.
Everyone is here. Kelly is attending remotely. Let's start with bond release, 1077 Osgood Street Angus Realty Corp, Butcher Boy. Request for release of a $10,000 performance bond associated with a watershed special permit granted October 1, 2013 for the construction of Penn Tocad Bank.
Okay, so obviously the site is fully constructed. The meeting packet includes the as-built plan shown on the screen, engineer certification letter, and the watershed special permit decision. All storm water structures were inspected quarterly for the required five years. The decision conditioned an additional $10,000 bond to be held in perpetuity. So we have an additional $10,000 not being released. This is the performance bond contingent on the as-built engineer certification and the cleaning of the stormwater structures for five years.
So we have a $10,000 bond forever?
Forever, given the sensitive site. So the Penn Tocad Bank is certainly within the watershed, Zone A of the watershed, and in case it was ever... We have it for the strip mall across the street as well that backs the lake, so it's not uncommon.
Okay.
So Alan Yumina, I think I saw come in. He's here if you have any questions, but I recommend full release of this bond with interest.
Okay, can we get a motion to release the remaining bond money plus any interest?
Motion.
Motion made?
Sure.
Uh, we gotta go to, we do a roll call. Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Sean? Nope, sorry, you don't get to vote on this. John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes. All right, bond money is released. Thank you for doing a good job over there. Okay, uh, is there anyone here for 34 Glenore Circle?
Yes, he's come in.
Yes, everyone present for that one?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, we'll do you now. A new public hearing. This will also be pursuant to the top of the agenda that I read earlier. This will be via remote and in-person. Application for a watershed special permit under Article 4, Part 5, and Article 10, Part, Section 195, 10.7, zoning bylaw to authorize construction of in-ground pool with enclosure patio demo deck, construct new deck, construct fire pit within the non-discharge of the watershed protection district. The property is located in the R1 zoning district. This is David and Mary Ann Sweetser's application.
Okay, so the proposed pool is located in the non-discharge zone from the edge of a wetland resource area across Dale Street. The closest point of the proposed patio surrounding the pool is 236 and a half feet from the wetland. Please note, the applicant has been asked to update the wetland delineation, so the delineation is shown on the plan as having been taken from a previous plan, and that was the original subdivision from what I can tell in 1999. And so wetland delineations are good for three years. Once that delineation is updated, conservation will go out and confirm the wetland flags. The first stormwater peer review letter has been received, however, a response is not yet submitted. The engineer is waiting to receive board comments as well before responding. The packet includes water quality testing from nearby Foamy Brook from April and October of '22. The total phosphorus readings compare favorably to Table 6.7 of the Lake Ochikawick total phosphorus sampling results from 1986 and 2021, which was included in the update to the watershed plan.
Okay.
Great.
Tell us about yourself and what you're looking to do.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to that. For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group, and the owners here, Mary Ann and David, are here with me tonight. I want to note that this pool, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a year-round pool, so it's not your typical pool where we're looking at, you know, pumping water out at the end of the season or anything like that. So one of the comments that came back from the peer review is, you know, what we were gonna do at the end of the season with the pool. And this pool, it's an eight-by-14 exercise pool, okay? So it's pretty cool, but it's year-round use, so it's not your typical pool in the watershed-type permit where it's, you know, being shut down and you need some sort of shutdown procedure in the winter that usually I would provide if that was the case.
How, what makes it year-round? I'm just curious, how does that, how is that accomplished?
It's, where it's enclosed, it's a heated space.
And it's enclosed?
It's enclosed. So if you, if you look at the plan, that proposed roof pool enclosure, even though it's show, you know, it's like almost 24 by 25, the pool itself is small, but it's gonna be a heated area for them to use the exercise pool year-round. I am showing drainage mitigation. I did review all the peer review comments. A lot of them are just bookkeeping issues. I don't have any problems with any of, any of the comments made. I can easily update the plan and answer each comment from the peer review. The backyard, it's a grass level area, no trees are to be cut, and we're really having very minor grade changes. If the board has any questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
How is it connected or related to the house? Is there, did you go outside and walk in? Is it like, like?
It's detached.
Detached, okay.
It's detached.
Okay.
Yep. So they, so they will have to go outside in the winter to get to it.
Right, see? That's a lot of dedication, so you gotta go through the snow to get to the heated pool.
We'll see how dedicated they are.
Okay. Okay.
So is it 25 by 24? Is that, is it gonna be a concrete slab? I mean, for the outer part, obviously, where the...
It's gonna be a slab.
Okay. And that's gonna be the extent of the... And what type of... You have a thing like a patio being built.
Yep, the patio, I have, I have a detail. It's gonna be a pervious patio. We show a detail. It's gonna be bluestone for the patio, but the, the base of it will be constructed, and I show a detail how it'll allow water to move through it.
And the, the roof of the thing is, how will the rainwater get mitigated off of that? Or you could have gutters and...
They'll have gutters. So on the site plan, I show gutters on, on each side with arrows showing how they'll go to the downspouts and then out through the roof drain to the cul-de-sac system.
What do you do on the inside to deal with, like, condensation? Yeah, come on up. I'm just curious, just, I mean, some people like, you know, hot tubs and stuff like that inside, but often that leads to condensation, so if you're having...
Right.
Curious about that.
Yeah, no, it's a Brady Sun room, and it has special bends going across the top that deal with the condensation that's going on.
Okay, I was curious about that.
So, quick question, is all the mechanicals of the pool inside the enclosure?
Some will be down in a little space in the enclosure, and the rest will be in the garage, and then there'll be pipes going underneath between the garage and the enclosure.
Okay, Kelly, any questions or comments?
Do you not have anything additional?
Peter, anything? Gene, thank you for providing the watershed data. I think that's exactly kind of what we were looking for in terms of when we have an application like this. Helps us, for me, it helps me also know where we're kind of talking about in relation to the lake, and also that, you know, I mean, less concerned with the indoor, what we're talking about, but I think that's the type of data that we want for these different applications.
The water treatment plant had no issue providing it.
Great. Alyssa, anything else?
No comments.
Okay, I mean, it, I'd say get all the stormwater questions answered, get everything good with the peer reviewer, and I think we're good. Thank you very much.
It'll be okay if I draft a decision for the next meeting.
Yeah, as long as everything's buttoned up.
Yeah, it's in order, yeah.
No conservation issues?
No, they're outside of the 100. Again, once that wetland line gets updated, they're gonna wanna go out and confirm it, that's all.
Okay, so yeah, we just need to condition that.
And it's not close to 100, so I trust it'll be outside that.
Right. I'm gonna, I'll flag it, and I'll walk it with, with Amy from the conservation office.
Okay, very good. So I, this, we can come back for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue. This is a new public hearing, we'll continue. Does any member of the public have anything they wanna say about, questions or comments on this, since it's a public hearing? Nope. Gene, did we get any, receive any?
We have not.
Questions or comments? Okay, so we'll keep this open until the next hearing, which is March 21st? 21st?
21st.
March 21st. And we'll try to issue, assuming everything's buttoned up, we'll issue a decision on that date.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, let's do, um... Brian, how long do you think 4850 is gonna be? 15 minutes, 10 minutes?
Hopefully even shorter.
Okay, let's do, let's do 4850 Water Street.
I would say this is fairly technical zoning.
Okay, so let's do it before our brains are mush.
So the applicant has purchased the building, and for those...
Let me read it first, I'm sorry. 4850 Water Street, Jason Saracini, hopefully I got that right. Applicant requests a determination of adequacy of onsite and off-site parking spaces and requests for a waiver of site plan review.
Okay, so this building is on Water Street. It's the former Richards TV. Most people know it by that. It was sold, I think, this past June, and the applicant is looking to renovate it. He's actually looking, he'll go before Machine Shop Village, because he's looking to bring it back to the original condition. He has images back from the 40s, 50s timeframe, and so there'll be exterior renovations, certainly, but no change to the footprint. The proposed use is very similar to the previous use. There are three apartments above the first floor commercial space. One bedroom is being added to the residential space, so there's three units that are currently one-bedroom, one's gonna change to a two-bedroom unit. There is no proposed change to the footprint. A staircase is being removed from the rear of the building, and balconies are being added. The proposed change to the site is that the drive aisle to the left of the building is being replaced with the handicap access to the commercial space. The drive aisle to the right of the building will become an entrance and exit. This, at the time my staff report, the building inspector felt it required a variance. Brian and I have since talked and talked about the planning board's authority potentially to be able to address this.
Gene, why did you think it required a variance?
The aisle width is only approximately 12 feet wide, and the minimum aisle width for two-way traffic, I think, is 20. I could be wrong.
So it's updating the... So I guess, so I guess I have a question before we go further. If someone just went, and so the, the, the commercial space is still there, right? Just not being used?
It hasn't been vacant for two years, as far as I'm aware.
Right, so if someone just reopened shop there?
Yeah.
It wouldn't come before anybody, right?
Well, the, the fact that the handicap is changing the traffic circulation, so now we have a one-way...
Right, no, no, I'm saying if they didn't do any alterations to the building?
Most likely not.
If someone just opened up a store there?
Yeah.
Which is our, it was a store, it wouldn't come back to us. It's the improvements that trigger coming for review. Is it fair?
Fair, subject to one minor qualification.
Please.
Which we could, if we were just going to a straight business office use, yes, I would agree, because the parking requirements are three spaces per thousand gross square feet of floor area for the, for the retail use that was there.
Yeah.
But that was a specific retail use. It was heavy appliance use.
Ah, okay.
And so what, and by the way, Brian Vaughn, for the record, obviously, Smolak and Vaughn, this is Jason with me, he's the owner. We also have the architect, I believe, in attendance, and the engineer, Rich Williams, I think is available, if you have some technical questions. But because we don't know what use is we're gonna be able to get in there, and from talking to the, to Gene, the town, community, we think what might be a good, good use could be kind of like a small-scale convenience store grocery-type use, but we would like to be able to market it to other retail uses, and those uses require potentially up to six spaces per thousand. So we're seeking parking reduction plus the aisle width modification in connection with this.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Not necessarily parking reduction, but the use of on-street parking, which the planning board has the authority to grant.
Correct.
In this, in the downtown area, including Water Street.
Okay, and what's there right now? Are the, there are apartments there right now? Are they rented?
No. So, yeah, so there, historically, there've always been three apartments upstairs on the talk-two floors.
Yeah.
And the Richards TV was there forever. Currently, no one is in the building. We're looking to do a, a complete upgrade in terms of facade, but also interior modifications, modernize it, bring it up to code. But it's presently vacant. We're looking to, to do the work and then re-tenant it again with, with three residential units upstairs and commercial first floor.
And the parking satisfies the residential use? So parking requires five spaces. They're actually showing six spaces delineated now. I don't even think they're delineated.
The onsite parking?
The onsite, yeah. So it's really the commercial use that...
So whether or not the commercial use can make use of the public parking spaces?
Yeah.
Up to eight public parking spaces?
Just up to nine in the revision?
Nine?
Six.
So it, it's, it would be nine with the residential and, and a business use on the first floor. It would be technically 12 with the retail, even though it's, you know, six spaces per thousand versus, versus three. The space is so small that it isn't substantially increasing the parking requirement.
Okay. Anybody have any initial comments, thoughts?
Fine with what they're doing. I mean, improving the building and making that street and the neighborhood solid, I think is a good thing. I don't, I don't see really any downside to this.
Can I ask you what got you to purchase that particular building in that particular area? I mean, this, I agree with John, I think it seems like something that the town would wanna encourage, this taking a property that's not really in good shape and good use and putting it to good use, but it seems challenging, so I'm just curious, something...
At the time, I was looking for an investment property.
Jason, can you just go closer to the microphone, pull it towards you.
At the time, I was looking for an investment property, and this property came up, and I don't know, I looked past some of the old dated materials and saw some of the charm that was there, and the more I started getting into it, started learning more of the history of the building, and I was, wasn't scared of the project, really. Look forward to bringing it back to life.
Okay. I mean, it's definitely an area that's, you know, obviously growing in use and in numbers of people. There isn't, I mean, obviously marketed, you know, different ways, but the convenience store idea is interesting, just 'cause there isn't really much there in that, in that regard. Okay.
So I just, I just have one technical question.
Yes.
Brian, your most recent memo mentions a special permit for parking reduction. The way I read it in design guidelines, the planning board has the authority to, to...
Modify.
Modify design guidelines.
Correct.
And although you're pointing to number three under that table, that's still within the design guidelines section, so...
Yeah, which is this, I guess, the same way we had done the Green Apple Cafe.
Exactly.
Correct.
So in my opinion, you wouldn't need to come back for a special permit if the board was amenable to allowing on-street parking with an aisle width of 20 at the, at the curb, at, of 12.
So to, what's the motion that's in order here?
To approve the site plan waiver to dedicate on-street parking to satisfy the commercial use.
Okay.
I think those are the two.
I'll make that motion then.
Okay, so motion made to waive site plan review for 4850 Water Street and to allow the use of on-street parking.
And to modify design guidelines for drive access.
So to allow up to, for 12 spaces, right?
Drive, the 12-foot-wide drive access.
No, I'm just, just of the parking spaces. We're waiving site plan review.
Yeah.
We're allowing for 12, is it 12 spaces or 13 spaces?
It's 12.
12 spaces to be used, to be counted from on-street parking and to allow for the revised width in the plans for the aisle.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made by John?
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes, that's approved.
I don't think it's too late, but anybody from the public? Unless, no, okay.
Not a public hearing, though, right? Just, I mean, if anyone had anything they wanna say, that's fine.
Yeah.
Definitely listen. Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck, and good luck with the Machine Job Village, and where you go from here? Thank you.
So I'll write that up, Jason, and formalize it for you. I'll write that up and formalize it for the building's commissioner.
Okay, cool project. Okay, um, continued public hearings? Jump right into that? Do you need no reason to do the discussion, discussion, other discussion items first, right? We don't have anyone coming in for the zoning bylaws?
No.
Okay, so let's go to, um, continued public hearings. So Zero Turnpike Street continued until March 21st at their request. 14 Second Street and 149 Main Street, Second and Main LLC. Application for site plan review, parking, inclusionary housing requirement, and downtown overlay district special permits under Article 8 supplemental regulations, Part 1, off-street parking and loading, Part 3, site plan review, Part 13, inclusionary housing, Article 18, downtown overlay district, Part 1, and Article 10, administration of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes redevelopment of the property to a mixed-use development contained within a single building, including ground floor commercial space, along with two floors of residential units above the first floor. Total of 24 residential units are proposed, along with parking, landscaping, lighting, and other improvements to be located on a single lot consisting of approximately 28,559 square feet by combining parcels known and numbered as 149 Main Street and 14 Second Street. Property is located within the general business district and downtown overlay district. Gene, who missed the meeting last time?
Alyssa and John.
Okay, have you, have you guys watched the meeting from last time?
I haven't watched it yet, but I would...
Okay, so John needs to watch?
Alyssa has and signed her form.
Okay, and John will need to do so.
Right, John, I have your form, but I'm locked out of my office, but I'll need you to sign the form once you watch the video.
Before, so we're not, we're not, at, at the last one, we did have a bunch of presentations. We had good public comment, we did receive some comments. I did say at the end of the last meeting that we would have today, we would not be voting today. Last time was, the first time was back in a little while, it was also a snowstorm, we also didn't have people here. I wanted to be able to have a full discussion as well as to have additional public comments available. We very well, if everything's buttoned up, may have the chance to vote it on the next meeting, so just make sure everyone's dotted their i's and crossed their t's before that, okay? So why don't we do this? Gene, I'll let you introduce where we're at, then I'll take any additional input, if there is, from the applicants. Then I will read in any public comments that have already come in.
Yeah.
Then I'll take any board questions or comments, and then we'll open it up to further public comments. Okay, that'll be the order.
Okay, so at the time of agenda posting, because it was two days after our last meeting, for the most part, I just carried information forward for your benefit, and you had, got to look at it. That information included a presentation that has now been updated for tonight's meeting, so a lot of information came in over the last couple of days, one of which is an updated presentation, one of which is response to the traffic peer review. The, the one remaining issue was sightlines at the intersection of Second Street and Main, predominantly as you look to the right. So there were a lot of conversations today. Our traffic peer reviewer submitted an email with an attachment late today that I've emailed you, but essentially it has satisfied his review at this point with the proposed amendment.
To, just when you say conversation, conversations between the peer reviewer and the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, not, not amongst us?
Not amongst you, no.
Yes.
No, Ed, but I did, I did have the opportunity to forward that to John Bojaysey, the town engineer, and he has sent me an email late today saying he is fine with what Tech has recommended in their email to the board.
And the, and the letters regarding, or emails regarding the site plans are, are now part of, or the packet and part of our record?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. In addition to that, we've received two better comments, one from St. Burgery Church. We got in, again, the parking utilization memo that was updated at the last meeting. They've requested the board to hold off on making a decision while they hire their own traffic engineer to assess the parking situation, and the immediate about is, I'm sorry, I forget the addresses, but it's the house immediate to the south and the one that sits in front of it, and you've heard, I think, from both of these residents about the property line. There's a, a proposed retaining wall that will have a fence above it, so their concern is, although they walked the property and they did attend a public meeting there, their concern is, not that they're saying the property line's not correct, but they just want assurance and hire their own surveyor to survey their property line to make sure it's consistent with what the applicants have presented.
And we'll read those letters into the record.
Okay. So that's what's come in new since yesterday, and so I think the presentation we probably should start with.
Okay, let's start there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board, for the record, John Smolak and Vaughn, representing the applicant, Second and Main. With us this evening are Hillary Holmes, Max Polanco, and Sean Suking with Lang and Engineering. Also with us is our project architect, Jim DeBarrow. Our presentation is really abbreviated for this evening, since it's only been a week, but in addition to comments from Gene, the fire department also had issued a closure letter as well with respect to their review.
Fire department's done their sweatpath analysis and they're satisfied?
Correct.
Okay, I saw that letter in the, in the packet.
Correct, and they also received the snow storage plan as well, so...
So Jen, and I know, I see, in our, if you could definitely just highlight things that are new or different?
Yeah.
Or responses to anything that's come up? or responses to anything that's come up.
Yeah.
I think we're familiar with the existing conditions as well as the studies that have been done to date. But anything new or anything in response to any comments would be much appreciated.
Right, right. Well, we don't intend to go through the 39 pages of slides.
The 39 pages, I was worried. We're on the same page.
You're just testing me. So since last week, we've taken another look at lighting in response to the comments from last week. And so Langen will discuss some of the adjustments that were made to provide further shielding and blocking of that lighting. And also, as Gene had indicated, we have some comments on the tech review, peer review, and we'll explain that in a little more detail. And lastly, we've had some signage placeholders for the elevations. We don't know what's going in there yet, but we still want, nevertheless, want to identify sort of placeholder wall signs for future use that would comply with the sign dimensional requirements. And with that said, I'd just like to turn the discussion over to Ashan, who'll just briefly discuss the lighting changes and the slides related to it.
Yep.
Someone want to go straight to lighting?
Yes, 9A, please.
What number did you say?
9A. Yeah, the one before that. Okay. So Ashan Suking, landscape architect with Langen. Just want to touch base again quickly on the lighting. Since last time, we swapped out image A that you can see. Yep, that should give you a better example of what the fixture would look like. I think the last time it was more of like a top and bottom view, so this is-
Gotcha. You mean to the right of the drawing?
Oh, sorry, the left, the A, fixture A.
Okay.
Far, far left.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, that was kind of the only update for that slide. The next one is our actual photometric updates, just showing, you know, to kind of ensure that there's no light spill over onto the Butters' property. And we've taken, the two images that you see on the right are measures that we're taking to kind of prevent that. The first one that you see is the extended arm that's offered by the manufacturer. It comes out, so any, if there's any light spill, which there isn't, which you'll see in the next one, that's kind of to just like block, completely block that off and give you that extra dimension from any backlight. And the next one, I think, just kind of, you know, covers all of that. In some of the older-
Where's the next one? Let's get on it.
Sorry, the micro house side shield image.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is kind of like the newer-
Can't really relate to what I'm looking at there.
So these are at the actual light source, the LED light-
Okay.
At the fixture.
Inside the fixture?
Correct. So they're panels, right? So the-
Okay, so we're looking up into it?
You're looking up at the panel.
For that photo?
Yep. So the black that you see is the house side shield. You're controlling the light where it goes.
Inside the fixture.
Right at the source, not like the ones you see in the back. So that's the new light technology, yeah.
Can you zoom one more?
Zoom again?
Yeah. All right, that, okay.
Yep.
So just to make sure that I'm tracking here, the image that's labeled micro house side shield-
Yep.
Is that as if we are looking up at the bottom of the light fixture as it's hanging on the pole?
Correct.
And as we look up inside the fixture, we can see that each LED has a separate shield-
Correct.
-to keep the light from going towards the Butters.
Yeah.
And how effective is it?
It's, yeah, it's very effective.
I mean, it's very effective. That sounds great, but you know, this is all very impressive, but understand-
Sure.
I'm not a lighting engineer. My colleagues may be. I don't think they are. And so this is all very responsive to the questions we had last week, so thank you very much. But we're relying entirely on you now saying, oh, it's very effective.
Yeah, and I mean, what does that mean?
So there's a foot candles.
Wait, wait, just stop for a second. Not related to this.
Okay.
For the record, Kelly left the call. She was not feeling well, so she's left the meeting. So just, she did not finish this part of the hearing. Just wanted to make sure that that was, that's noted for our officials, so she'll have to catch up on that. Okay, so now we'll continue. Can you describe, yeah, what these numbers that we're looking at behind or on top of the letter As?
Yep.
My understanding that those relate to the lighting.
So those are the foot candles, means the light levels that are produced. So you can see under the light, you'll get a lot more-
Can you expand again, Gene, because I can't read the numbers more? Oh, so there's zeros.
Correct.
On this side of the building.
So it does a pretty good job with the actual house side shield in each.
So maybe to get it a little bit, like, something is four or two. What's the difference between four and two? Is it arithmetic or is it like logarithmic?
It's like, it's a light level. Can you clarify?
No, but I mean, is four like twice as much as two or is it like 100 times two?
It would be twice as much.
Okay.
It would be twice as much.
Yeah, okay.
So it's not logarithmic?
No, I don't believe so.
Yep.
A previous application described it as moonlight. I think 04 was moonlight. Is that-
Yep.
And I think one thing, if, when we get to the decision-making point, this may be something at least worth a discussion of whether or not we want to condition any future studies of this.
Well, I mean, I take that's-
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Because it's not a question of lack of trust, it's a question of relying entirely on very effective, even though it sounds great. So if we had a condition that allows us to take a look after the installation, is it as very effective as you're assuring us? I really like that, A.T.
Yeah, I think we have to do that because you can never engineer everything into your decision.
When these numbers are measured, are there any other factors, like what are the ambient conditions? You know, is it that there's already a bunch of light out there? And so with all the existing background light, it doesn't pick up anymore. But if it was truly a dark night, then those readings would be different. Can you help me with understanding how the ambient condition affects these measurements?
Correct. So we did not take into account any, you know, light that might come out from the window of the neighbors or streetlights. Say a streetlight goes out, we have to consider for the light that we're putting in to meet safety standards to make sure you're providing enough light to certain areas.
So these are not measurements, these are calculations.
So they are the levels that the light produce?
Right.
Yeah.
So you've not been out there with a light meter because the lights aren't installed and you haven't done a test. These are just based on what the lights are capable of producing.
Yeah, correct.
Right, so it doesn't take-
Yeah, so all the more reason for conditioning.
Right, and it could go multiple ways, right? The conditions on may make it so that the light appears brighter, but at the same time, doesn't include the wall or the screening or anything like that, so.
Okay, great. I really appreciate the follow-up. Thank you for being responsive.
And I'm curious, I mean, I don't remember seeing that shield technology before in any of our, I mean, like, we talked about-
Does that mean that we should ask if they could bring it in?
More like the sign? Well, I'm curious to see going forward, if it does work to this level, whether it's something that we can suggest being incorporated into other designs. Because if it were, because there are other ones where we've done this kind of conditioning, but if there are issues, it's nice to know that there may be solutions as well as technology improves. So I'd like to see, see how it functions.
So from the last diagram you saw last week, you saw the rings, the foot candle rings, which extended on to the residential property. So by virtue of extending the arm of those streetlights, combined with the fact that you have a fence, a solid fence lower, it provides a very effective lighting buffer and allows us to make the demonstration that we comply with the foot candle requirement off-site.
Okay. Good. I think with the conditions, that'll, that'll work well. Okay, great.
Thanks again.
Gene, it's 10?
Slide 10?
10.
That's just right next, the one that we were looking at. Good afternoon, members of the board. Maximo Polanco with Langen Engineering. So like Gene said, to give you a brief update, the tech, which is the peer reviewer, has, they agreed to all of our comments. Their only comment that they had was regarding the sightline on Second Street and Main Street. It's the next slide, Gene.
It was 11.
11. Yep.
Correct. And basically, he was worried about regarding the constraints. So the existing building, which is, I would say, hard to look at it from here, but the existing building, actually, it extends further. The proposed building, it's extending basically three feet back from the existing building. If you've been there, there's a bank and the ATM has a structure with this glass, which kind of prohibits people visibility. So we've showed that with the proposed building, if we just stop at the vantage point regulated by ASTO, which is 14.5 feet back from the edge of travel lane, we meet the minimum stopping sight distance, which is 155 feet for a speed zone of 25 mile per hour. But even though what we are proposing, the way that the building is being designed, the, what we are providing is 190, so which is greater than the minimum. But even if we were to stop the vehicle, which is what people are doing right now, if you go a little bit lower to the intersection itself, Gene, at a point which is 11 feet from the edge of the travel lane, then that distance increases from 190 to 235. So what we are proposing is basically to provide a small pavement marking update to that section to basically provide more refuge for the car. That way, everybody feels, I would say, a better, in a better position to see vehicles coming from the east.
So did I hear you correctly that this will improve the sightline coming out of Second Street?
Yes.
Because the current ATM enclosure is closer to the edge of the street than the new structure would be.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Three feet closer. Three feet closer.
Okay. In addition, with the markings, as you see along the front of 149, and coupled with the more clearly defined lanes, that will allow for a little more clarity as to the, as to the lanes as well and provides better sight distance by having that car be able to pull up more, to be able to see more before it turns.
Correct. That was it for, I would say, the traffic update.
And as Gene has indicated, tech had reviewed this as well and submitted comments to the fact that they were satisfied with that solution.
Satisfied with that, but they also recommend a condition during construction time-
Right.
That we're going to need a construction plan and how they're going to mitigate scaffolding and other things along that sidewalk.
Okay, so that's a condition. I mean, we always have construction conditions, but that's not one of our standard conditions, but something that could be added?
Yep.
Okay.
Just a question, just not really clear. On these markings, how much of a distance are these markings from the curb?
So we have basically reducing the lanes to 10 feet. Right now, from the center, the existing central line to the curb, to the existing curb, there's approximately 26 feet. So we're reducing in that small section, the lanes to be 10 feet. And then you have that additional kind of six feet that will be that pavement marking that is shown as a chevron. And then obviously, it'll blend into the existing sidewalk. So it's striping, it's better than curbing because you don't want people, you know, hitting the curb or anything like that at that point.
And then will there be like signage for, say, you know, no delivery trucks, no, you know, Uber drivers or whatever, Amazon drivers pulling up and blocking the view?
That could be added there without any issues.
So what would the mechanism be to add that?
I don't know if it's necessarily at this moment of site plan, but once we submit construction documents, like what we did here, it's basically conceptual because we did it fast and with the information we have. But once the town engineer reviews the plans, the construction documents, and maintenance plan that Gene referred to, that can be added.
And I would think that the police department as well as maybe the selectmen might have to approve the traffic signage, if I'm not mistaken, so.
One concern I have is that if there, so you see how there's like a car in this diagram just before the driveway? Looks like, looks like there's a car. Is that what I'm seeing? My concern is if there's cars parked right before the entrance to the driveway, that that would have, that makes the sightline difficult.
So if you're looking to the right, like Gene said, exiting, there's not going to be vehicles parked there because the, with the striping, then you cannot park there.
No, I'm so, I'm looking more, I'm sorry, looking more exiting, exiting the parking lot onto Second Street. Sorry.
Yeah, so on that one, we can as well add, I would say, no parking zone at that moment.
So that's, that's just, yeah, maybe right bef, I mean, again, I think no parking, it's a, I think that would have to be a select board thing. I assume because it's a public parking spot. And I'd want to make sure that, you know, the people living there aren't, don't really use that because I wouldn't want to impact them for their parking. But I think that if there are cars parked, just really in that one spot right before the driveway, I worry about people not being able to see, or people not being able to see coming down the street, someone coming out. So I would think that it would be a good idea to talk about having no parking just in the limited space right before that driveway.
Any more questions? Have you considered impact of snowbanks on that sightline angle coming out of Second onto Main?
So like, I would say, it's, Second is a very minor street. So the sight distance, the way we're showing it, it's kind of like for a collector road when Second Street is a local road, as we call it. Since it's basically serving the people that live in that neighborhood and a little bit of cut-through traffic, but it's not a, definitely not a major road. So for a major road or a local road, those considerations, and even for the way that we're showing the sightline, we're showing it from, I would say, the most vantage point for the car. So we didn't specifically took into consideration that, but we could-
Well, in addition, we submitted a snow management plan that was submitted to the fire department that was reviewed and commented on, or actually didn't comment. They didn't have any questions on it.
Well, what, John?
That's on property. You're referring to on Second Street?
You're talking about on, on Second Street? Are you talking about on the property?
The impact of a snowbank on the corner, it would be the south side corner of Second and Main that would impact the sightlines that you've shown us.
Well, if it's on the public way, that's a function of the town's maintenance obligation. If it's related, if you're getting a little bit further on that, if it's dealing with onsite, there's not a whole lot of onsite snow storage, and so we're proposing a condition that requires the removal of that snow off-site at the point where it starts to impact notably-
That's really where my question was going, John, when I asked if you'd made considerations. Does the snow removal plan take into account removal of the snow on that corner of the building? Or is your snow removal plan only focused on the parking lot?
Well, what it's focused on is not only making sure that parking and pedestrian movement are not impacted as a result of the snow, but also in terms of sight distances from exiting the property. So-
So you're telling me that the snow removal plan takes into account maintaining clearance for sightlines with respect to snow removal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That addresses that. And in some of the images you have shown us, if I'm not mistaken, there was some vegetation shown along the edge of the building fronting on Main Street, some trees.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, and coming out of Second Street, does that vegetation impact the sightlines that you're describing to us now?
So right now, no, because sightline-
Because it's not there?
No, no. Well, well, right now, no, because they're not there. But so the driver's eye, right, it's in a car, in general, by ASTO, is 3.5 feet from the ground floor. So those trees, we made sure that they are going to be at least 12 feet higher. So you're just basically going to see the trunk and the canopy is going to be 12 feet or higher. So they won't obstruct visibility. And if you see the plan, basically, or the line, the way we've drawn it, they're basically behind the trees.
The trees are in these boxes, shown on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay, good question. Thank you, Peter. Okay, let's move to whatever's next.
And just to clarify, I like the vegetation. I'm not suggesting, you know, you remove it because Peter asked about the sightlines. My question, to be more specific, is when you tell us what these sightlines are, have you checked to make sure that those trunks are not obstructing what you're telling us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next, Jim DeBarrow, our architect.
Hello, everyone. Jim DeBarrow from Jody Architect, representing our clients, Crespo Young Group. On page twenty-seven starts the architecturalists to go over the changes that we've made. So just to start and talk about the revised, proposed elevations, as John previously mentioned, we did want to add some placeholder spots on the elevations for signage that will be potentially used by potential tenants of the building on the commercial side. On the top elevation here, you can see there are two signs. They're about, you know, two feet in height by about twelve and a half by thirteen feet in width, both of them. And that is for the front elevation, and if you go down and scroll down to the next.
Is this the side facing Main?
Correct. That's the Main Street elevation.
These are signs for the.
The commercial spaces, correct. And this.
One quick question, are these signs illuminated?
It hasn't been up, that hasn't come up yet in terms of the design of the signs.
We don't allow for illuminated, internally illuminated.
Not internally illuminated, more like what you'd see, you know, something gone on the new, the new construction down on Main Street with kind of the gooseneck fixture that shines onto the sign. It looks a little better in that regard as well. Gene, if you could scroll onto the next elevation. This elevation here shown is on Second Street, and also the signs are kind of in relation to the storefront that is below them. We have three on this elevation. Onto the next page, we have no signage on the rear elevation, but on the last elevation, if you scroll a bit to the right, you will see one more sign that we are proposing on kind of a cheek face of the, of the, of the Main Street elevation, mostly for a placemaking sign of showing the address of the building. You can see it on some of the renderings where it says one forty-nine in a larger lettering. Moving on from there to the renderings. We do not have any changes since the last meeting for the renderings, but we, you know, I would like to definitely go through them with you guys as well, for those who aren't here, for some of the aesthetic changes that we made. I know John wasn't, wasn't here last time. So what we've done is taken that more modernist cube on the side and replaced that with a more traditional horizontal siding or a vertical board and batten siding. We've kind of made two, two different options there on how that, that could get parsed out.
Was that based on community input about her comment?
Correct, yes. It was based off, on the onsite meeting, we had some good feedback from the, in terms of reflectivity in sunlight and all that.
Have you gotten feedback on whether or not your proposed changes addressing those concerns meets their expectations?
I have not heard anything as of right now.
Do you have a plan to get feedback on whether or not this is responsive to the concerns?
I'm sure we'll hear that tonight. Or we may hear that tonight, because folks are here.
Correct.
So basically, as, as Jim was suggesting, there is either a vertical or a horizontal treatment, which are a few slides ahead of this, I believe?
Right, yeah, if we keep, well, there's no differences in these renderings here. But if we go to the proposed finished materials, as seen, obviously, we're using majority brick with a dark trim, but on the lower two, two kind of swatches, you can see that we either have a horizontal cement board or a hardy plank, something more traditional for a vertical side, or horizontal siding, mind you. And then we have a vertical board and batten option on the next slide, which both shown in a muted gray to keep, keep down reflectivity.
So we're also looking for the boards' input as to sort of a preference as well?
As you can see also on that little cheek face where it says one forty-nine is a spot where we're planning on having some, some signage and placemaking.
Can you just go back up there, just to see a comparison of the two? Is there a functional difference between those two in terms of like reflectivity or cost or anything? Is it really just aesthetic?
Both negligible in terms of, you know, any sort of differences performance-wise, but it's just a taste thing, and we're willing to.
Architecturally, what is the significance of vertical versus horizontal lines like that?
So the horizontal lines do a better, better job at making sure the building seems more squat. It kind of helps spread the eye left to right rather than a vertical line would draw your eye up in relation. Some would say that the horizontal, you know, traditional cement board might, might be the best option in that regard, making sure that the building's height isn't, isn't as noticeable.
Yeah.
I mean, I like, personally, I like the horizontal better. I don't see much of it just when we compare the two, though. I do think, yeah, it, it's like, it does make it look a little bit taller when you have the horizontals, especially with the boards underneath. It seems like it's like kind of on stilts.
Yeah.
Or is the other one kind of settles in?
Certainly.
Okay. I think it's nice to have the options presented.
For sure. And last but not least is just talking about the neighborhood sections and how those are portrayed. If we go down to the next slides, Gene.
Oops, sorry.
A little too far. We did want to take away that the black band on the bottom could give a better sense of, of scale of the building, as seen here.
Can you expand a little, Gene?
We're doing our, our reporting here of the, the heights from Langin's survey of the surrounding buildings, as seen, the house across the street and Water Street, St. Gregory's, our building at its longest dimension, mind you, and twenty-six, twenty-eight Second Street. If we go to the next slide, we also have a little small locust map at the bottom which shows which way the section is cutting through the neighborhood. Same situation here, we're talking about one sixty-three Main Street, one fifty-nine Main Street, our building in question, as well as through Second Street and one thirty-nine Main Street. Simply reporting the data that we have collected.
So I think it's no, no different in terms of the architectural design throughout the Main Street area. It always goes wavy up and down.
Is there any questions on the design?
I think you're right, John, but if you go to the previous one, Gene, at least in my mind, the difference here is the massing, right? That's a big block, but this is helpful to see, just in terms of raw height in relation to other buildings, and so I take your point. I think it is similar, up, down, up, down, but it's a, it's a pretty big up. It's a, it's a bigger massing. I mean, can you think of other examples in the downtown except for the mill buildings? I mean, those are pretty big massing, too.
Well, look, look at seventy Main Street. That was approved, what, seven, ten, ten years ago, maybe?
I think two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen. I mean, it's different massing there, you know, so.
Right, you could essentially, the way you slice through a building.
The seenness? Yeah.
The way you slice through a building can, can make the building seen unflattering by what, what direction you're slicing through. If you're slicing through the plaza down the street, the long way, it's, it would be, it would be shown in this same section that's much, much, much longer. It's all in proportion.
So there's other examples of massing of this size or, or more?
Correct.
Okay, great.
I have just a quick question on the Main Street view here on this massing section. The parking lot, and I, maybe this was mentioned before and maybe I missed it or didn't notice it, so that Main Street parking lot is actually lower than one fifty-nine Main Street.
Correct.
Okay, and then that's where it's going to have a retaining wall and then the fence up there.
Right, and that's, that'll be, we'll talk about that next.
Okay, that brings a little bit of a clearer picture of what that was looking like. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else at the moment?
Hillary, yeah, Hillary Holmes, Langin, just, we'll walk through a couple of items in terms of survey, common boundary with one fifty-nine, one sixty-one.
Okay.
Hi, Hillary Holmes with Langin. Gene, if you could go to slide, I believe it's two, or maybe three, I don't remember. Yeah, three, sorry. Yeah, so we just wanted to touch on the survey plan. This was provided as part of our planning board submission, as part of our drawing set. The survey was conducted by a licensed surveyor, signed and stamped by Peter A. Nolan and Associates. You know, our team is confident that the, the survey line is correct and that, you know, I know it's spoken about how the abutters are going to have their own survey done. You know, we're confident that the abutter survey line will be consistent and the same as what we're showing on our plan.
Can you just help orient me on this map?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Main is on my left.
Yes, and Main is on your, on your left, Second Street is on the bottom.
And so the abutter we're talking about is left top, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So the abutter we're talking about is the one fifty-nine, which is Spencer, and then one sixty-one, which is McGregor. Yes.
And is what we're seeing here the current building?
Yes, so this is the existing conditions plan, showing the existing parking lot edge that you can see in the existing buildings. And for the property line that is on the top of your page, you can see that the property line and the meets and bounds fall right on the face of the building at one fifty-nine Main Street.
So, I mean, you're, you're telling us you're confident that your survey is accurate. I mean, I wouldn't expect you to say that you're questioning it, so what's the point?
I just, I just wanted to bring that to the planning boards.
That you've done a survey with a licensed surveyor, and here it is for everyone's use?
Yep, yep. Just wanted to, yeah, just wanted to respond to the comment.
Thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Do you have any idea how long it would take for another survey?
Just based on availability?
Yeah.
There's a lot of surveyors, so just, they're always busy, I'll say that, but.
We're typically waiting at least two months for survey work these days, for larger projects.
Okay, anything else from the applicant at this moment?
No, I think, I think we're done.
Okay, very good. If we need you, we'll call you back.
Appreciate responsiveness to the question.
All right, I'm go, we're going to go to some public comments. So first, I'm going to read into the record the public comments that we've received previous to the meeting. If one of them commented something that someone here has made, that doesn't limit, you can still get up and talk and say other things, I just want to read these into the record. I'm sure everyone on the board has read them, but I just want to read them into the record. So I have a, a letter from Reverend Father Stephen Belgian, the pastor at St. Gregory's. Dear Miss Enright, please be advised in light of the recent traffic parking study presented at the planning board meeting of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, St. Gregory Apostolic Church has retained the services of Transportation Engineering Planning and Policy LLC, Ninety-three Styles Roads, Suite 201 Salem, New Hampshire, oh-three, oh-seven-nine, a transportation engineering firm to conduct peer review and analysis of the proposed project at one forty-nine Main Street, fourteen Second Street, with respected traffic parking combinations in the vicinity of our church premises. Given these new circumstances, we respectfully request from the planning board the additional time required in order to complete our study and present its findings to the board. Then we have, the letter and the presentation were together, right?
Yes.
So why don't we?
The letter was an email.
So why don't we do that first, and then since they took the time to provide some pictures, we'll go back through those, okay? We have an email. Dear Miss Enright, I am writing in regard to the proposed development at one forty-nine Main Street and fourteen Second Street. I live at one fifty-nine Main Street, which is a direct abutter to this property. I did receive a letter from Mr. Smolak and reached out to him to schedule a walkthrough on the site of two seventeen with the development team. During this discussion, the developers' team stated that the property line between my home and the abutting lot is the side of my house. Based on that information, their plan is to place the retaining wall on the edge of the adjacent green space, five feet from my home. However, the thickness of the wall is two feet, which will place the retaining wall and six-foot fence, three feet away from the entire first floor of my home. Based on this disagreement on the property line, myself and the owners at one sixty-one Main Street are retaining our own surveyor to identify the accurate property lines for one fifty-nine and one sixty-one Main Street. We are currently waiting to hear back from several companies in order to schedule the survey as quickly as possible. We respectfully request from the board the additional time required to complete the survey. I'm also attaching a few slides with this photo of the site to further illustrate the layout of the existing structures. Sincerely, Karen Spencer, one fifty-nine Main Street, David and Liesel McGregor, one sixty-one Main Street. And then we'll go to the presentation. Again, these are comments that have come in, presentation that come in, I cannot speak to the veracity of those, I'm reading them verbatim and just trying to show everyone what has been presented, and we may ask questions or may comment on them afterwards. All right, this first slide is front view, one six, second slide, I guess. All right, here's Main Street and Second Street photos. One sixty, front view, one sixty-three, one sixty-one, and one fifty-nine Main Street. We have some labeled heights on those. Significant difference in size between current and new structures, height current, twenty-one feet, proposed forty-two feet. Distance from abutting property line, current seventy-two feet, proposed forty feet approximately. Creates alley for one sixty-one and one fifty-nine Main Street of abutters, requesting twenty-four units versus zoning for eighteen units. Five feet of green space bordering one fifty-nine and one sixty-one, this is a side view Main Street with bank parking. Five feet of green space bordering one fifty-nine, one sixty-one Main Street and development site. Question on location of property line, surveyor hired by abutters, or two, it says surveyor hired, the email seems to say they're looking, so would love some clarification on that as to the progress there, if any. Proposed retaining wall and fence at five-foot line, retaining wall is two feet thick, three feet from one fifty-nine Main Street, and we have.
So can you go back for a minute? So, John, am I interpreting this correctly that the current proposed project would reduce that five-foot green space to three feet?
Well, first of all, yes, yes, I think, and I'll let our engineers add to that. Basically, there's no setback requirement under this, under the downtown overlay district for the side yard. We're required to maintain parking at least five feet back from that setback, and so that's what we've done. We're also installing the retaining walls, was discussed, and that retaining wall height drops anywhere from three to five feet on the existing parking area. And so, but the retaining wall is going to be roughly at the same elevation as the abutting landowner's property is. So on top of that would be a proposed fence that would be installed on the, on top of the retaining wall. And so we, we walked through that entire length of where the retaining wall would be, as well as the proposed fence. We sort of measured and sort of identified, you know, standing there where that fence would be roughly located, and we also noticed that with respect to the proposed fence, the six-foot fence on top of the retaining wall, some of the windows might be slightly obscured, so we suggested that as a method to maintain that, that view. If the, if the abutting landowner wanted to maintain their view, we'd adjust that fence accordingly.
Right.
So to maximize light and air to that extent.
I mean, that sounds great that you're having that interaction, but what I'm trying to get my head around, that I need your help with, is if I'm, if I'm looking, you know, from Main Street right down, like the lower photo, okay? Right now, I see wall of the house, edge of the parking lot, five feet. You follow me so far? Now, if. Can I just add one thing to that as well? At the great risk of losing my train of thought. Twenty years ago, there wouldn't have been that much of a risk. Fair enough. I take it that the retaining wall is about two feet thick. Is that about right?
Yes.
Okay, now, does, does that mean that from the parking lot side of the proposed retaining wall, again, from the same view, you'll come towards the house, two feet, that'll be the top of the retaining wall, and then from the edge of the retaining wall, another three feet to the house? So it's still a total of five feet?
Yes.
But now, it's three feet green space, two feet top of a retaining wall, and so, given that the distance is so short, it's a very high proportional effect, it seems to me, on where that fence goes. If the fence were on the parking lot side of the retaining wall, you still have a five-foot separation. If the fence is on the house side of the retaining wall, you have reduced that distance almost by half, forty percent. That's a big proportional decrease. So have you thought about how you can engineer this so you're still maintaining five feet by virtue of where you place the fence on top of the wall? And if you have thought about that, did the abutter have any comments about that? Does that help, or does that not make a difference?
So for what we had submitted in terms of the basis of design. So, for what we had submitted in terms of the basis of design for this wall, we're proposing a large block gravity wall. So it doesn't involve, it's not a, you know, a wall that would involve a deep, four-foot deep foundation, given our five feet that we're working with.
So where you're going here is that you're gonna put the fence in the ground and the.
So, well, so I'll go into a little bit more detail. So the gravity block itself is 28 inches, so it's like 2.33 feet, right? That particular wall has a little bit of a batter to it, and we had shared that on the, at the last meeting, and it's also in the presentation. So you can see a little bit of a batter as those blocks step up.
Can you tell the group what the batter means, because now I'm thinking of baking a cake?
Yeah, so, is it possible to go back to our presentation, just to this section, because it'd be easier to show that? So, at the highest point, this wall is five feet on the 149 Main Street property, which would be, you know, several blocks. So each of those blocks, a batter means that the face of that block is set back a little bit.
It steps in.
Yes, steps, it steps in. So in this case, for these blocks, the batter's like, you know, one and five-eighths inch per block.
Yep.
So at the worst case, it's about a six-inch batter.
From bottom to top.
From bottom to top.
Gotcha, so now we're down to four feet, six inches, rather than five.
Yes, you have this, you have the six-inch batter about, you've got the 2.33 foot block. Within that, we can embed the fence post into the block. There are some design limitations based on, depending on the basis of design, the type of block, exactly where you can put that post. You know, the post that we're showing is a four-by-four, and then we are showing boards on both sides. So there's a little bit of thickness to that, so, you know, looking at it and doing.
So six-inch batter, four-inch post, plus an inch thick of boards, and you're already lost a foot.
Yeah, so we're about, from the, if you're looking from the Butters side, it would be from that, the face of the wall and the, the fence on the Butters side, you know, it would be about three feet to, from there to their property line. We could look at doing, eliminating the batter, and we could gain another six inches, you know.
So, here's the thing, this explanation is very responsive to my questions, so thank you.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to design it here. All I was trying to find out was, given that there's only five feet,
Yep.
two feet, three feet, makes a huge percentage difference. Is there a willingness and ability to see if some of that can be clawed back? Maybe not the whole five feet, but more than three, and if, which it sounds like you're saying maybe it could, which then begs the question, does that help the Butters? That's up to you and the Butters, but, but what, what I'm hearing is, there may be a way to help bring some relief to the reduction from five feet to three, and if there is, I would ask that you engage in that, and to the extent that engineering allows, try to bring some relief. It sounds like you're willing. Is that correct?
And the question is whether, whether it's feasible to be able to do that, given the thickness of the fence and so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, like I said, we could give maybe a six, half a foot or something, but in terms of, without detailed construction drawings, you know, actually going a step further, I can't guarantee that you could do more.
I mean, even when you say that you might be able to go without the batter, I mean, it actually sounds to me like you could make a worthwhile difference, but everybody's been super patient with me drilling, drilling way down here. I, I don't want to get into a design discussion, but what I'm gonna take away from this, and you need to tell me if I'm wrong, what I'm gonna take away from this is it sounds like there's engineering alternatives that you will explore, and you will check with the Butters to see if that would make a difference to them. Have I got that right?
You need that.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, and then, go John.
I just want to ask you a totally dumb question, because I think I totally missed it. Where exactly is the line?
The house.
The house, oh, really, literally is the house?
Yeah, at the 159.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Yeah, at the 159 Main Street.
Nothing we could do about that.
Nothing you could do about that.
But we could try to buff. You do have the five-foot thing with the car, right?
Right.
So, so you can't use that space for the purpose of a parking lot, you still have to have, I mean, that's why we're still talking about five feet.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. I mean, it obviously makes it more complicated, because if the line were five feet away, then they couldn't even go under that.
Right.
And that's a function of the screening by fence, too, as well, to provide that buffer to the extent that the neighbor wants that.
Well, thanks for your patience with that. Good thing it's not near the lake, don't make it worse.
I mean, do what, can I, I'm gonna ask one more question there. Do you have to have a fence in that portion? Like, if they said they didn't want a fence.
Um, I guess that would be a decision for the Butters, if that would be something that they.
I mean, if the view is, again, I don't know how important the view into this building or this parking lot is. It's if it's, they sit out and look at, or don't look at, or don't care, or really do care, just, I mean, that's an option, too, it's just.
I mean, along.
If the option is a lower fence, higher fence, or no fence.
Yeah, and it's, and in that section, along 159 Main Street, you know, that's where we have the wall that goes from about five feet to, I think, three feet. So it is the park, the cars are sat down, so it's not like they're, the car, it's not like they would feel like the cars are like looking into their, shining headlights into their house.
Right, so you could even, you know, again, getting far down the field, it's something you could do later on, too, is like.
But that could be part of your discussion.
Right, just something to discuss, okay. All right, and then let's go to the last view. Second Street View, 163, 161, 159 Main Street. Additional concerns are listed, parking, space for snow storage and removal, stormwater review and drainage, peer review feedback, maintenance required every three months. Okay, and thank you for putting that together for us, as.
Nicely labeled.
Yes, yes, our eyes appreciate the labeling. Okay, any additional comments that have come in online?
No.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions that people want to ask before we take public comment? Nope, okay, so let's do public comment, and then we can discuss or ask any questions that we have. Okay, again, public comment rules and regulations can come up, say anything regarding the project. It can be anything we talked about tonight, anything we talked about previously, it can be a question, it can be a comment. Try to make it germane to this project would be helpful. Please give us your name and where you live, address any questions or comments to the chair, and then we'll deal with them accordingly. And again, if you provide a comment online, that does not preclude you from coming up and asking questions or making comments now. Also, nobody has to, you can move on as well. So with that, public comment is open on this public hearing.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Karen Spencer, 159 Main Street.
Thank you, Karen, for the presentation and the comment.
No problem. Peter, I think you actually made most, most of my points for me based on the presentation, but that kind of misalignment between if the boundary is the actual house, or if the boundary includes the five-foot green space, was the reason that I wanted to have my own survey done. My understanding was that the boundary was the green space and not the actual house. And in that tight quarters, it does make a big difference.
So you believe that your property line went to the green space?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's a big deal.
It's not a reasonable.
That's five feet.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that is a big deal, so, you know, if, if you're right, then that puts things in a different context. But if you're wrong, we are where we are, yeah.
Have you made any progress towards, towards that?
I've called several, the soonest schedule I've been able to get is out in May, so I was just gonna try calling a few more, see if I could get anything better.
Okay, I'm, okay, that's fine, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, it's mostly the risk of the applicant. Because if, if they present this and it's approved, and they're wrong about the survey, then they're coming back in here to redo everything, because we're approved, if it's approved, it's approved with the plan with that five-feet buffer. So if that doesn't exist and that's not on their property, then to me, that's obviously significant, and then pretty makes, pretty much makes their plan invalid, to the extent that it's that fee, I mean, if we're talking about six inches, we'd have to consider that. But it, it's mostly their risk. Now, if you come and tell us there's something sooner, we can look at it. I mean, you know, they did have the survey come in and done, so, but we understand where you're coming from, and I, I mean, I think most people don't know their exact boundaries of their houses, and I could understand that assumption, so, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Father Stepan Baljan. I'm a North Andover resident at 38 Green Hill Avenue, and also the pastor of St. Gregory Armenian Apostolic Church, which is in a Butters of the proposed site. I thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak. You received our letter, and we are respectfully requesting additional time in order to conduct our own neighborhood peer review to find out what kind of impact this will have on our own parking and access to our church.
Go, sorry.
I know it's 2023, okay? I know that churches are not always held in the same esteem as they once were, and they're not seen as essential as they were. I can assure you that as one of the seven churches in North Andover, our church matters to a lot of people in our town. We minister to spiritual needs, and people count on being able to access our church and to be able to park in the vicinity where they need to, to be able to get there. I understand it's not about turf, it's not about, you know, this is our neighborhood or whatever. We, we're a church, we want to be welcoming to anybody who wants to move into the neighborhood. But we feel that the project as it is being presented will have an impact on the general traffic and parking in the area. We want to be able to document over an extended period of time. One Sunday in the middle of January does not always accurately reflect the maximum capacity of people that we have visiting our premises. So we want to be able to take it over multiple Sundays and multiple days to be able to show what kind of impact this will have.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay, any idea how long you might need to do that?
I would really love it if we can show you a picture from Easter Sunday, or Palm Sunday, which is a month and two days from now. But, I mean, again, we're, we're, it's not me conducting the survey, we're gonna rely on the firm that we've hired.
So, maybe just a comment then? First, my starting position is that the houses of worship are a vital part of the community. So I appreciate your entry comment, but I just want you to know where my starting position is, and I have a lot of confidence or faith with my colleagues on the board that we're not dismissing the vital nature of a house of worship. And, and also, I used to worship in that building, growing up here, when it was the first Methodist church. And even though I was, you know, a lot shorter than I am now, I, I remember, it was hard to park. That was back in the seventies, so I, you know, have a personal appreciation, having been part of a family that worshipped in that building under a different, you know, church at the time, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name's Dawn Marie Paradas, I'm at 32 Second Street.
Okay.
I teach high school locally, not in town, but in Haverhill. And I know that process is important, and giving time for that process is important. And I also understand that time is money, but striking that balance, I think, for your residents and your neighbors, especially those who are going to be most affected on Main Street, I think is reasonable, a reasonable request, what they're asking. Certainly buy-in is important for them. I had a bunch of questions, kind of connected to process. First time I was notified was just before Christmas. In the days after Christmas, things are a little crazy, so I was a little shocked to hear that this project was so far along, with so many residents not even really knowing about it. My understanding is that most people on Main Street don't know about it. It's, it's been through the efforts of some residents who have just pounded the pavement and gone door to door, which I think is, I think is terrible, actually. I think it's tragic, especially, because we're allowing developers to determine the character of our neighborhood and our downtown. And I think that begs a little more time, I think that begs a more transparent democratic process. I think it needs to be family-friendly, not just Tuesday nights. But beyond that, I can raise concerns that you've heard. I, I would love to speak, just because this is my, really my only second time.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I am not trying to fault anybody, life is what it is, people are busy, people get messaging late, people can't make meetings, I understand. But this feels fast for us who are right there when this is about to go up. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm catching on late, but I can promise you I'm gonna be on it, and be paying attention what's going on from this point forward. I understand now how important it is. I can raise a number of concerns that I'm sure you've heard addressed before. Parking is obviously a concern. The fact that we're talking about inches and feet is just by itself enough evidence that parking is an issue. Being the few years on Second Street that I am, my major concern is the increased traffic that we've seen. Second Street has become a reroute for people trying to avoid traffic on Main. It's become a reroute now with apps like Waze. It's become a nice little shortcut that takes you around Main from 495 to Union, to Marblehead, to Union on up. People are going pretty quickly, and the starting point and the final point for that traffic is a turn either onto Second Street or off of Second Street. And those parking spaces, I know we looked at things on paper, but on paper is different from in practice. And it's very difficult at that top part of Ma- of Second Street, because it really comes down to one lane. So there's not enough room for two-way traffic comfortably, and there have been near misses. I, I myself have seen people come flying off of Main onto Second Street and vice versa, there's just not enough space there. Snow removal, I worry about dogs and kids, where are they gonna go to the bathroom on our lawns? I mean, these are all just small things. I worry about HOA rules, are there going to be, are people hanging towels and laundry on the balconies that face our Main Street in downtown? Or in our backyards that face us? I have, I just have a lot of questions, and I think that I would appreciate just a little more time. And I think the neighbors, the church, the surveys that are being asked, requested by the Spencers and Macgregors, I think it's reasonable. And I think it's gonna go a long way for people to feel like they've been part of the process, they've had enough time to do their due diligence, and to feel good about one of the tallest residential buildings that you're putting on that block. I don't know why it has to be 24 apartments, why not 12? We haven't even seen how things are gonna fish out from the new condos and apartments that we've put in in one square mile. Please, if anything, I'm just begging for just a little more time for us to all catch up and get on board. And I don't need to take away from the efforts and the time that you've already put in, I appreciate that, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
I have a lot to say, so I want, but you can go first.
So, this is not, my comment's not gonna help you, but I feel it's important that you know that the concern about notifications was heard by the board. We have had discussions at earlier meetings using this as an example of how we are processing notifications. And I think it will make a difference going forward. And the only satisfaction I can give you on that point is, we listened, we heard, we've talked about it, and I, I think there'll be some improvements in that regard, notification. But I will also tell you that I'm confident that we followed our rules. I'm confident that there was no wrongdoing. But in spite of that, we still felt it was important to have a discussion about whether or not it could be improved beyond what's specified in our rules. So, no wrongdoing, but a good discussion, thank you.
Right, and that, that discussion, I think, was in December or January?
Yes.
So we did talk, because so, this topic of this 14 Second Street, 149 Main Street, the topic itself was originally breached when, in, before, in July, last July, before the board.
In September.
Then it came in September before the board. Because it was a discussion item, there was no, there are no laws or regulations requiring publication or any of that. In January, we, in December, it came before the board for the original hearing.
With about three hundred abutters notified.
Right, so, when a public hearing is notified for the first time, that's when state law, which we follow, requires us to send out notifications and it's required to certain people at certain distances. And we follow that because to change that for different hearings would be unfair. So we follow the state law as to who's required and it's required and is done at the beginning of any public hearing. We're only required to have one public hearing, but we've had multiple. One, because we want to get it right, two, because we want to hear from as many people as possible. So that started in December, came back here, was it February? When was our, when were we back here, John?
Yes, February twenty.
In February, continued it for today. There was a request from the applicant for us to vote on it today. I said no to that because we wanted more time to be able to hear from people and to have more evidence. And it's at least going to be continued until March twenty-first. So I think we've done a lot in terms of trying to make sure that there's enough time for public input. As Peter stated, we followed the law to a T. In terms of the dates and times of meetings, these are all volunteers. And we come here at least twice a month, sometimes more, for multiple hours and do work outside of that to try to get these right. So, I do take some umbrance there in terms of the dates, the times. There are other public meetings as well that people want to go to and, and hear from, so.
If I could just interrupt, there's also a number of people on the board who are doing this volunteer duty while raising families. I mean, in my case, our kids are grown, but there are members of the board who have young kids and it's a heck of a balance. So, on the one hand, they can really appreciate your comments about family-friendly. And on the other hand, here they are every other Tuesday.
Right. In terms of the timeframe for making a decision, I don't think we're going to determine that tonight, but it is, I will ask that a draft decision be available for the March twenty-first meeting. If people are ready to vote on it, then we will. Well, if we have any updates about a surveyor or about, about the parking, we'll listen to that, frankly, on, and we'll vote. We'll vote, it's not going to be my decision, we'll take a vote. If people are ready, we'll vote on if we're ready to make a decision on this. From my perspective, I think that I will be, but I want everyone to make their own decision and also come at it with whatever information is provided. I frankly feel more empathetic to the survey issue, because to me, that's a real big deal if that's wrong. But at the same time, I do take a lot of stock in the fact that a survey is already done stamped and it would be a lot to risk for the applicant to get that wrong. So I do take a good amount of stock in that that being correct.
Atar, I think you made a very good point that's worth highlighting, that it's not just that the survey was done with a licensed surveyor, but the people before us are experienced developers and they understand the risk they would take if they got the survey wrong. That's a pretty significant risk.
Oh, I mean, it would reopen the hearing, their whole drawings, everything would have to basically be, I mean, some stuff could be kept, but that's a significant risk and cost, so.
Right, so, you know, it just tends to sort of increase the confidence that I'm pretty sure they would not put all that at risk.
Right.
So it further strengthens that we think that survey is probably pretty reliable.
Right. That being said, Ms. Spencer, if, if anyone has an update on that and you have a timeframe, we're certainly happy to listen to that. The public, the, from the church, I agree with Peter wholeheartedly that, that, as someone who goes to a temple and who finds a lot of meaning in that, I think the church provides a significant benefit to the community. My issue is that we're talking about public parking, that you rely on rather than parking on your own property, which I assume is limited, given your need to have the parking agreement with the current owners. So I'm, that makes me less, I guess, empathetic to having more time regarding that, because again, it comes down to that it's all public parking. And I'm sure there are dates when it is used, and I'm sure it's used more on Sunday than other dates of the week. And there are days where it must be, as Peter even said, that over time, it's been very hard to find parking, but I don't really put much weight in that. And, and frankly, your own peer reviewer, I'm not, obviously, we're open to taking whatever evidence is provided at a public hearing, but I'm not sure when we have their applicant as well as our own peer reviewer, who, the applicant, so the way a peer review works, for anyone who doesn't know, is that we get to, when the applicant is doing a parking study or a study of the stormwater or things like that, they do their study with their people that you've heard from. We then get to hire our own people that they have to pay for as part of their application, but we get to choose them and they report to us about the studies that have been done, give their comments and things like that. So, TEC is one of the most well-known and well-regarded, so the fact that they have not had any issues with the parking, I take a lot of stock in. So, I, I'd find it unlikely to continue for, out for an additional month to have additional traffic studies done, but we'll take a vote on that as a board. In terms of the project itself, I think all my questions have been answered. I will say that I, and if anyone else wants to make any comments, please do, but.
I have one more.
Okay, just let me finish and then we'll go to you and anyone else. I've heard a lot of the comments, especially, you know, we always try to, as much as we can, address abutting comments, and I appreciate that there has been dialogue between abutters and the developer, and there's not always going to be agreements or answers, but I appreciate that there's been dialogue. We do look at strongly the effect on the neighborhood, we also look at the effect on the downtown and the whole, as well as the town as a whole. And one of the things I'm specifically looking at is how this type of project, and this project specifically, benefits the town. And I think there are a lot, which, you know, when we come time to voting, that, that I'll want to talk about, but I think there are a lot of benefits, both in size, scope, the mixed-use nature of it, so. Wait for now.
So.
What are the benefits?
Oh, okay. Well, Peter, you want to comment first or you?
Well, no, go ahead.
Okay, so, benefits. I think, one, we do need more housing. I know people don't think it, but the numbers, the numbers actually say we need more housing. We get affordable housing units out of it. One of the biggest things that has been talked about is downtown improvement. And we have a study that's been done, right, Gene, in terms of downtown improvement? Significant funds that are going to be allocated towards downtown improvement. And downtown improvement and use of the downtown is vital, especially to a town of our size, and our downtown is so underused. And one of the main ways, if not the only or best way, to get use of the downtown is to have both people that are living there and businesses that people want to go to. And mixed-use developments are, for planning purposes, in a town like ours, the key to that. If you can have a business that the local residents are going to use and rely on and that caters to them, that means more people want to be downtown. That means other people will come and visit them. That means people will come and walk the downtown rather than just coming to go to one place and leaving. It means that the other businesses that people are now there and walking and seeing will also get more use. So, having people who are actually living there and businesses that are not just one time, just go in and drop out, leads to a revitalized downtown. It helps other people look and see, hey, maybe I want to invest here. Because I think frankly, right now, people are scared to invest in our downtown because it's not doing well. And so we need a, not necessarily a flagship, I wouldn't call it that, but a signal that there can be improvements to the downtown. And I think a building like this, I think twenty-four residents i- is a good number, residential units, I think they'll get affordable ones. And I think that this type of project allows for more investment in the downtown. That puts aside any financial benefits, which I think there will be, but I think it's not a significant amount. It doesn't come with a lot of costs, not a lot of, if any, children, very little in terms of maintenance from the town services. So I think there are a lot of benefits to a project like this, specifically in the downtown area. You want to take a comment or you? Sir, yeah, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Joe Almazian and I'm the chairman of the Board of Trustees at Saint Gregory's Church. I just have one question to ask. Could you share how the board would make a decision on the total number of units that's allowed in such a development? Obviously, there's parking and it's sort of in its totality, you make a decision, but, you know, in this particular case, we've heard some comments about, you know, the size of the project. If the size of the project was smaller, it would give some relief to some of the concerns around maybe the total space and therefore parking and things like that. So maybe you could share how the board would make a decision on the total number of units allowed?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So, just to backtrack a little bit, there was, when we first started discussion items of this, there was, and, and to Peter's point, this is something we're trying to get more notice to people about when things are discussion items. But there was, it was at a higher level. John, what was the unit count previously? Thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So the initial proposal, well, the initial discussion was of a three, four-story building with thirty-six units. The board had a discussion with the applicant, basically saying that that didn't seem like something that we would be comfortable with, though they're free to make whatever application they want. They've made a proposal of this twenty-four units and have asked us to grant a special permit. We can grant it at that amount, we could grant it at a lesser amount, but basically, we're, grant, we'd be asked to grant a special permit and in that permit would be the number of units allowed. Fair? So, the proposal is twenty-four. Generally, we vote on the proposal as it is, though in other ones like the Avalon project, I believe they asked for a specific amount of units and we said, no, we give you a special permit at a lower amount. And so we gave them a, a lower amount. So not that that would necess, that, just as one of the possibilities. So basically, in our special permit, we can grant them the number of units that we think are appropriate. And then based on those unit numbers and the size of the building and such, parking and things, requirements flow from that.
Well, and the other example would be Royal Crest, where, I mean, it was a close vote, it was three to two against, but a big part of that vote was the density and the number of units. We voted on the proposal and voted no.
Right, so, but in that case, it was a zoning bylaw change and we were voting on the specific number that would go into the bylaw, but the idea is the same in that it's a vote of the board on the number.
So, I wanted to make a comment in two respects. One is the idea of, of timing and, you know, can there be more time available? So, I, this is a comment I'm making to my colleagues on the board, that in my mind, I am not setting the clock to August, September. The applicant came in as a courtesy, wanted to let us know what they were thinking. I think it was very well-intended that we listened, but we have had since then a discussion about what we should do going forward, if that comes up again, because I think there's people in the room who would have preferred to have been part of those informal discussions. So for me, when we talk about how much time, and, and we talked about this, or at least we alluded to it, my clock starts when the notifications went out. So I do not view this as a project that has been pending since August, not to me. To me, December, January. So we're moving pretty darn fast. Now, John, if you feel that clock should go back to August, September, my answer to that would be, fine, then we should have done public meetings back then. And again, I know this was very well-intended. Quite frankly, I applaud the idea, but we've had this discussion. My second point is this. I think sort of technically, your point about Saint Gregory's and parking, you know, they rely on public parking. That's the way it is. There's not a lot we can do. Technically, I, I agree with you. It's not what I want to hear, but technically, I think you're right. And I think it's a very fair point and important to be made. But now I want to try to draw an analogy, and maybe my analogy is wrong, and if you think it is, just tell me. But we had an earlier discussion here with forty-eight fifty Water Street. And what the board said was, wow, this is a pretty good project. We got someone who wants to fix up this building, going to fix up the apartments, they're going to fix up a small retail space. Yes, the board's okay with you relying on some public parking. You have our endorsement, go ahead. Now, it's not a direct analogy with what Saint Gregory's is asking. In a sense, it's almost the opposite. But my point was, there, the board sentiment was, this is worthy, even though it's going to have to rely on public parking. Now, we're kind of saying to Saint Gregory, look, you have to rely on public parking, you're on your own. I see a slight, now, again, this is a tortured analogy. It really is, but if Saint Gregory's comes back and says, look, we could do a parking study, it's going to take us, you know, a month or two months, I think we would have to really have a real problem with that, but I, I just don't feel that even though I think you're absolutely correct technically on the merits, I think we ought to have some type of sentiment of appreciation, much like we just did with forty-eight fifty Water Street. I don't quite know how to do that.
You mean for this project or, because I, I, I feel like you could make the same argument for this project that you made for forty-eight fifty.
Yes, that's why I'm saying my analogy is tortured and it's almost the opposite, but all I'm saying is there was more of a sentiment of appreciation, it was more than a sentiment. The board said, go forth, this is a great project, you know, we agree with it. And yes, you're right, George, the, John, the direct analogy is with the project. I just, I, I feel like we're missing that piece with Saint Gregory's.
But go back to, remember, you raised the point about, you know, a check-in when we were talking about the lights?
Yes.
And, you know, one of the things, we've done this for a number of projects before because.
Bill needs us to use.
We know when we plan a project, that there's so many variables, so many things that could happen, that you can't legislate everything in a decision, it's just impossible to do. But you, so, what we've been doing, and I think we've done this basically at every project for like the last year or two, we said, come back in six months, twelve months, pick the interval, and we're going to review these four things. And if they're awful a little bit, we'll do our best to fix them.
So you suggesting we could have a condition with respect to parking as it affects a, a user like Saint Gregory's?
Well, I mean, I think in general, I think you, you have to address the, because, for example.
So that's an example of the sentiment of support that we just showed for forty-eight fifty, that if we had some type of condition, six months, twelve months, we need you, applicant, to look at this again.
I'm making this up, but.
But we've done it.
No, but my point is, on this one, I think it perfectly comes up because the, the, this project is, for the people that live there, they're providing the parking. And the retail piece of it is mostly on street parking. Okay. So if, for example, it turns out six months down the road, all the people that live there are parking on the street, that's a problem and legitimately, we could address it. If the people that are, they're going for the retail, decide to park in the Masina parking lot, that's a problem. That's a legitimate problem we should address. And I think that's the best way to deal with it, is that because, you know, we can put it in there, that you can't do certain things.
That is responsive to my tortured analogy, thank you. And to me, that would give us some, some way to appreciate what another user of public parking has to endure with some potential follow-up. And so people understand what we're saying is, we, we set conditions on decisions and just like the lighting that we discussed earlier, we would have a condition saying, once you've built it, we need to see if it's performing what you told us. We could also have a condition, which we've done before, to say, we want another assessment of how the parking is actually working in X months and Y months. It could be in six months and then. It could be in six months and then again in twelve months. We could structure that however we feel is necessary. And John, that, that is responsive to my weird concern. And Aton, if you were gonna say something else, in agreement, go ahead.
It's, it's that. I think my technical approach might seem harsh, and that's not how I intended it. It's just that I, I have a strong feeling that public parking, and sometimes, and someone used the word competition before for public parking, is okay, to an extent, right? There's a time when it becomes not okay, and I think that's what this gets to. But if we approved a project like this, it doesn't mean that they get all the public parking spots either, right? It just means that the people have to figure it out.
I'm glad you made the comment. I was just remarking that our sort of way we were articulating this seemed a little different between.
Yeah, I just think, I think these, all of these, I think it's, I do think it's harder on the residents and the single-family houses and the, and the small houses that live there. I think that parking, and, and really, that's generally just where I focus. I think it is more difficult on them because that's like an everyday quality-of-life issue. So I think that's where I focus and I rely on the traffic studies and look at all the data and information, that's where I focus. The church parking, it's important, it definitely is, and use of that. But I think these are things that can coexist. And I think based on the data and the information we have, I think they strongly can coexist.
And the data we could get in the future by conditioning it.
Correct.
I think John's comment is spot on here.
Correct, I just don't know that additional traffic studies waiting for them would be helpful.
Frankly, a traffic study could inform the first six-month review, but I mean, the problem with parking is that it's, every day is a little different.
And it depends on what business they get in there too, right? If it's not open on Sundays, because, one, because it's not the type of business that's open on Sundays, or because they don't want to deal with their customers fighting for parking spots.
Maybe it's not a traffic study, I may have misspoke, but a parking study.
No, I understand, I understand, but I'm saying.
We, we could assess that down the road.
Correct, but it would be, need to be assessed based on conditions on the ground.
Right.
Yes, so I agree with that, I agree with that.
You already have the data.
No, no.
This is twenty-twenty-one for parking utilization from the data study.
No, correct, we have the current data.
And you have the, and you have the twenty-twenty-one data too.
Right, no, but we don't have future data.
The one's narrow one, I think you're talking past your cell here.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, we're just talking, we're talking more about, is there a better way to, I think we have enough data for right now.
Yeah.
I agree. But the question is, future data might be worthwhile as a condition, so that, that's all. Sir, go ahead.
Greg O'Farion, eighteen Inglewood Street, also eighteen Waverly Road in North Andover, also a member of St. Gregory's Church.
Okay.
This past Sunday was a great example of the inadequate traffic that there was on both sides, there are cars parked, you could only get one car through Main Street, one car. And if there was a fire or ambulance, you wouldn't be able to get that through. So what you're talking about, businesses being open on Sunday, you're throwing a lot of hypothetical situations and you're gonna cram this huge thing in the middle of downtown, I think is a really, I mean, it's a crazy idea, crazy, you know? I mean, it's, it's a lot of, lot of intangibles, a lot of, the schools are busting from the seams. No, I, anyway, shaking your head, but it is.
Because we've already studied the schools issue.
No, I, well, what, what studies, I mean, it, I mean, it's impossible, because you know what? I, I know school teachers, that they just, you, you got rid of the Brad Street School over there, you got rid of that pro, you know, that, that piece of property, it was a nice property, you put that monster right on the side of the street there, you know, you're ruining the integrity of the town. And, you know, honestly, it's, it's, it's a, I can't believe that that huge building, you're even considering that, you know, it's, it's, and the schools, the ABCC over there, they need to build even a bigger school over there because there are too many kids in the preschool and the kindergarten. So you eliminated kindergarten out of all the public schools and you put it there, now you need even more. Every classroom is twenty-five students or more, and I know that for a fact. So I don't understand, you're, you're building on Sutton Street, you're building over here, right on Osgood or wherever that is, it's crazy.
So, so let's keep the downtown a ghost town.
John, John, let me, let me, so, thank you for the comments. I will say, just in terms of the schoolchildren, there are, based on the units types, we have a very good sense of, since we do these, since we hear these projects all the time, there's a good sense of what kind of formula you can use to calculate how many schoolchildren based on studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. And over, we've been very accurate with those calculations over the last several years. So we can calculate those.
What I say is not gonna matter. I mean, I, I know, whatever you have, you have formulated calculations that don't, I mean, everyone knows that properties in North Andover, you know, people are gonna try to cram people in there, and you have no.
I don't, don't know that that's true.
It's not true.
Yeah, I mean, and, and not to mention these people, how are you gonna affect their values, you know? I mean, I know they just bought that house in the front, you know, it's gonna impact them, you know, and, and for that, for someone to gain profit like this, I mean, like you're talking two, you know, two feet difference, six inches, I mean, it's, I don't know.
Thank you.
Would you like to live there like that? I mean, and having that huge building?
Okay, thank you. She can go up too. You wanna come up? Come on.
Hi, I'm Maureen Spencer, this is Mackenzie, we are
Hi, Mackenzie.
We're at one fifty-nine. I do, I do want to thank the board, I, we do appreciate the time for sometimes a thankless job volunteering, we do appreciate it. Listening to the feedback has, has been helpful. I know it, it doesn't always seem that way for you guys. I did, I think one of the issues, which I think we've, we've started addressing, was the, the issue of transparency with, with this entire project from start to finish. We're, our home is in most of the presentations that they've put forth. And again, we weren't contacted until after December, after the first hearing, when you did tell them to. So I think that's something to look for, like, look in moving forward, is it just, it just kind of set a bad precedent, I think, for everyone, is that it's been looked at and since the summer, and no one reached out until the board had to tell them to. So then it kind, that's why I think there are questions with a lot of it, like, the, the retaining wall is five feet, but it's two feet in width, so it's really three feet, like a lot of, there's a lot of questions like that. My other question was, in the peer review for the stormwater review and drainage, it says that it's required maintenance every three months. Who would be like in charge of that? Like, how does that work? This is, a lot of this is new for us, so.
Sure, that's a good question, Gina or John?
So the report is also conditioned in the decision, so it runs with the decision.
Okay.
So the owner is responsible for it, and it gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds and it runs with the land.
Okay, so the owner of the building would be responsible for that.
Right, so that becomes a condition of any permit, that there, the owner is responsible for doing that.
Okay.
And just, and I believe, just, there was a question before about HOA stuff, that's also part of, generally part of our conditions, right?
It's been indicated that these likely would be condoed. And so in any condo association, there'd be a homeowners association that would manage that O and M plan.
Right, and so we, but we usually have a condition about their, about there being an O and M operation and maintenance plan, and that being part of our, incorporated into our decision as well. So those are required.
So is that like something, again, this is all new to us, like a board, like someone follows up with, or is it, it's just like the, the HOA would, would maintain that and that's how we know, we just trust that it would be done?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a problem, they're in violation of their permit, they risk losing their, their permit or having it modified or something like that.
Okay, great, that's helpful to know. Anything else?
Okay, good. Sir?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is John Sari and I'm on the Board of Trustees of St. Gregory, Army Napa Stalag Church. You mentioned that there might be, there might be a lookback after, let's say the project goes through and then there, you would look at the parking situation downtown or traffic, and could you put some requirements after the fact on the owner to ameliorate the condition of these situations?
So, not exactly. What we, what we've done in past is required some sort of reporting back of what the conditions are. And, and then if there is a issue that, that is reported or becomes part of, you know, noticed or becomes made apparent, then we bring them back before the board to see if the conditions of the permit need to be modified.
Or upheld.
Or upheld.
Right, I mean, to the ext, I think that the approach that we're taking, that we talked about in the conversation here, is that we would put in some decisions on what we thought were certain standards of parking. We haven't written them yet.
Yeah.
And then six months later, twelve months later, I, I mean, I'm, you know, whether it's six months or twelve months, we would go and review that and see if, in fact, it was being upheld, in the same way like the lighting, if that lighting said it was gonna be a certain way, let's review it down the road to make sure it is that way. If it isn't that way, and it's not in compliance with the decision, they have to fix it. If it's in compliance with the decision and maybe there was something we hadn't anticipated, you know, that's a little bit more, a little bit more open-ended and, you know, result in good faith between the parties, I think, really.
What is your experience, the planning board, with tandem parking? And how much confidence do you have that the, the building project, that is, as it has been re-presented with twenty-four units, this is going to work and that these renters and the people who visit the businesses are going to actually spill over into the streets and, and use up all the parking up and down Main Street impacting all these businesses as well as St. Gregory? Do you have some experience with tandem parking? I mean, you seem to be allowing that, it seems rather, if I were living there, I would not want to have to deal with
No, but to some degree, the issue of one-street parking is an issue that any urban location, village, city, or whatever you want to call it, has to deal with. Because one of the things you don't want to do to have a thriving downtown is force every single building to put their own parking on their own site. That, what you've done is you created a bunch of strip malls if you've done that. You actually want the buildings to be on the street with a solid scape of that, and you do your parking differently. But I think what we're talking about here is, we are gonna put some elements of parking into decision because there are certain things we don't want to have happen. We, you know, the two that I mentioned is that the people who live, are gonna live in the building, by the way, they're condos, they're not rentals, so it, I think it's a nuanced difference. Parking for those people is in the building, and that's usually the norm of what you would do. So if they didn't park in the building, that's the kind of thing we wanted to review, fair enough, and force them into it, because they said they would do that. And the other one is, for example, the, you know, the large Masina parking lot, if that becomes the parking lot for the retail, I think that's fair to say that's not with the air, you know? So.
I think you probably can bet on that, that's going to be an issue down the road.
Well, we'll, we'll find out, you know, I mean, but that's why we want to have a look-back period.
Lisa Lucigian, forty-two Second Street. I think we all agree that the biggest issues with this building are its parking and traffic components. And I think the special permits that are going to be required for it to go through as planned, says a lot about what we probably use some common sense and do, and that would be, bring it down to twelve units, you wouldn't require as much parking, you'd have less, fewer people parking on the street rather than tandem, and it would be less of a problem for everybody, including the developer, special permit would not be required, and I think it's the best solution, twelve units. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can add something if you want, but I think, I mean, does anyone else have questions or comments on the board? I think we're good.
Just a comment for another day.
Okay.
In terms of Peter's comment, I strongly disagree about a huge notification on informal discussions. I think it's gonna chill the, the attitude or incentive for a developer to come in informally to get some initial feedback. I don't, I don't know any city in town that does that.
I, so, two things on that, John, I appreciate it from your, from your expertise, but one, we've already decided to require it, so you're a little late on that. And two, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, the earlier you can get people talking about these things, I agree that you get more buy-in and you get more sense, and you don't have to go with everything that, that we say or that a neighbor says or anything like that. I, I think if more people had come to this earlier on, I actually think it would have been easier. We're always gonna get people who come in later and later, like, if we continue this out three months, we'd still get somebody that comes in and says, I didn't hear about it. That's always gonna happen, because there, people have a lot going on, and they can't always be expected to hear about every single thing, totally fair. But I, and the reason we haven't done it in the past is because we've really tried to be as fair as possible to other hearings and just, and really just base it on the laws as we do this, and if we did it on one, why didn't we do it on the other? We don't want to get into that. But the discussion that we had was, we can really kind of see the types of projects, and there are not too many of them, that, that it would benefit to have notice and, and require that. And you don't have to, and you know, maybe you don't come, that's okay, then we just have more public hearings. But I still, I still think, I think it's a good solution, if not, to an imperfect situation. Whether we notify nobody or notify everybody, we're gonna be somewhat wrong, but I think I'd rather err on notifying more people.
I disagree. I think you're making a big mistake.
Okay.
But if you're gonna require notice, people just go somewhere else, I guess. But
I don't think so.
I think what you're doing is opening up another public hearing before a public hearing. And so what, what you're gonna get is the input that's gonna be negative without the ability of the applicant to support his, his application before it gets to the point where it's ripe for discussion, and you're discouraging initial early feedback from the board to be able to position it in a way that we can then proceed with applications and, and traffic studies and so on.
I get that from the developer's point of view.
It's gonna chill the developers coming in.
No, because, no, because you don't have to come for these, most places don't have people come in for these informal things. Most places, what they have is the developers go to one person behind closed doors and talk to them about it. That's what happens a lot of places.
Not in my experience, but go ahead.
I disagree with that. So, 'cause I know what happens, 'cause I've been on the other side of those meetings. So I know that that happens. But two, it, I think, I don't agree a lot of times with, you know, Peter's things, but I think he made up a really good point that it, two points actually. One, that it makes us appear that we've made a decision on something when we haven't. And two, there is a cognitive bias that when you've started something, just you and the developer, that it makes it harder to say no later on, and I think that's true. So I wanted, I think we came up with a really good way to hopefully go about it, and I think it's going to work. So I think that it encourages more public process, and I think, I think that's a good thing. And I think if a developer can't handle that, I don't think they'll go somewhere else. I think they'll just come in for the public hearing, just like a lot of people do.
You're just, I mean, you're just making it difficult among other competing cities and towns to, to bring a project through the process.
Okay, let's move on.
It's good enough, it'll make it through. Okay. Continue this public hearing until March twenty-first? Yes, yes, okay. Continue it up to March twenty-first. We'll ask for a draft decision, we'll hear what people have to say, we'll decide if we're gonna vote on that day, and if so, then vote may come on that day. So, be forewarned, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
I'll bring you a copy first.
As long as it's under fifty dollars. So don't go to Starbucks. All right. Potential zoning bylaw amendments? These are public hearings?
These are public hearings.
Okay, so continued public hearings for Continuing Care Retirement Center? Daycare Center, Daycare Center, Daycare Center?
I'm sorry, so the public hearing is the zoning, the site plan review Dover, the flood plain and the inclusionary settlement?
Oh, I'm, so I missed the
Oh, I'm, so I missed those, okay. Sorry, back up top. Annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles, continued public hearing, site plan review Dover bylaw. Have we had any changes to this?
We have not.
Have we had any public comments to this?
No.
We'll continue that till the next hearing. Floodplain bylaw.
Okay, floodplain bylaw, there is a minor change to it, in that the language for FEMA included the word ordinance in a couple places.
We don't have ordinance, because we have bylaw.
So, I've deleted ordinance, and I've replaced it with bylaw, where applicable.
No, actually, you gotta leave it open for, gotta leave it open. Just ask.
Why do you have to leave it open?
Just for open meeting law purposes.
We always have the door closed.
Really?
We never have it open.
You never get the door open.
Really?
Yeah.
We should, all right.
I was surprised when they came in, yeah.
I think we should.
Whatever.
They can see us.
All right, that's fine. I mean, I guess usually we don't have people outside listening, but I think we should. Maybe that's more courtroom closures. All right, tired. Inclusionary, so, floodplain, any comments?
It's just housekeeping. Ordinance shouldn't be in there sometimes. It was bylaw with ordinance in parentheses. I just believe in it.
Inclusionary housing?
So, inclusionary housing, there are some red line edits in your packet, and these are a result of John Smolak actually went through this in detail. I wish he had done that last year. It's really housekeeping, and the primary edit is, there are certain documents that we conditioned to be fully reviewed by Town Council and DHCD prior to building permit issuance, and that really should have been certificate of occupancy. Those documents take months and months to get reviewed and approved, and so...
So, we're changing those from being approved...
Prior to a building permit.
Prior to CO, prior to CO. Okay, that makes sense.
So, you see it in number five there. They're not gonna, a special permit, when, once that gets recorded, it becomes effective, and so, we don't need the approval at that time. The special permit allows to move forward to a building permit. That's just housekeeping language. And then, in F, it changes it from building permit to certificate of occupancy. We specify that a development can be offsite, but it must remain within the town of North Andover. You can't go somewhere else with the affordable units. Again, no certificate occupancy shall be issued until the Lip Regulatory and Use Agreement and the Marketing Plan are reviewed by Council and DHCD.
Okay. Okay. Great. Okay, those are all the public hearings?
Those are the public hearings, yeah.
Okay, so then we have discussion item, continuing care retirement center, daycare center, daycare center, daycare center.
Okay, and the one here that we left for discussion is the table of uses for CDD III.
John, I wanted to ask you about this. So, one of the things that we discussed at the last meeting was that daycare centers are allowed in every zoning district, but they're not allowed in CDD I and CDD III. And we're now not, instead of allowing them by special permit, they're now gonna fall under the Dover bylaw. But is there a reason not to allow them in CDD I or CDD III? Or was there a, do you remember?
No, I mean, it probably was, at this point, I don't know. The only reason I can think of that we held them out was that these were pretty small, relatively small parcels on a busy street.
Right.
But other than, and that we thought maybe we'd wanna keep them away from those locations, given where they were. That's the only reason, you know, I can think of, but I, you know, I don't remember offhand.
So, does it make sense to keep them out still? I mean, it seems like for, I think we're talking about for, for, there are required, state law requirements for sizes and things like that. I mean, we, we seem to be opening up the CDD I, and with all the CDDs a little bit more to try to encourage more use, so I don't know, or should we just leave it out? I just didn't know if it made sense to change it.
Let me, let me think about, would we have to make a decision on that?
Technically, the next meeting, we were gonna vote on these so much, 21st. This hearing actually opens on the 21st, 'cause these came subsequent to the first public hearing.
Oh, they were, so all these, so the ones on the daycare generically are because of Dover, right?
Yeah.
Not because of anything. And what's on the continuing care retirement center?
So, that is that Edgewood wants to buy a property...
Across from Brooks, right?
So far unidentified property. And, but there's questions about whether they can use the current CCRC, because it says that you shall have a nursing home on site, but also says you can use just the housing if it's affiliated.
Yeah, okay.
So, basically, we're cleaning that up to say...
Was Headstrom involved in this?
He was supposed to be here at the last meeting, but he couldn't make it at the last minute.
So...
Okay.
So, yes, he is involved. We're making, the way we've done it is to clarify that you can have a second CCRC if you already have one in town, and this is affiliated with that, with that particular one. Because they're affiliated right now. If we said you could do it affiliated right now, well, you could be affiliated with someone in California, that defeats the purpose. So, it's to try to say that this kinda thing is okay, as long as you're already affiliated with a current CCRC.
In North Andover.
In North Andover.
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, I mean, I have some ideas about, you know, getting a little bit of transparency of what they wanna do.
So, this just allows it as a special permit?
Well, my point is, it's the, you know, it's the art of the deal here, really. I mean, like, if, if they want something from us, I think there's some things we want from them. That's my point.
Yeah, I mean, this just allows this as a potential use somewhere.
But...
Is it, if, it cleans up the language.
Fair enough.
Technically, you may be able to...
The language needs it to be cleaned up. Like, John and I read it, we met on it. I'd read it again, and I'd call him and...
Multiple different ways.
The, the deep history.
I don't.
The deep, deep history on this. Well, this was even before I got on the planning board.
I was gonna make a dinosaur joke.
Yeah, no. The first version, Edgewood, they went to the, the developers went to the ZBA and said, we're building a nursing home with 200-unit building, and they approved it with, like, one hearing, one night, boom, nothing. The planning board got the Board of Selectmen to sue the ZBA. And we won.
Oh, wow.
And we won. So, they went back to the drawing board and ended up with the CCRC, which was a much better sort of thing. So, yeah, I, I think we ended up much better off in the long run, but that was, yeah.
Yeah, I think this could lead, it could lead to a good project, it doesn't guarantee anything, but it, it just cleans up the language and, and allows for this kinda idea that you could do another one without necessarily having a second nursing home, where you're gonna have to meet all the other criteria as well and get the permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But I will check for that.
Yeah, and think about it.